Thank you. We have the role.
Absolutely. Um, sorry. Um, see, I'm echoing, I should be echoing. Okay, let's.
A little glitch here. Just be my two.
Check it off. Okay. Mm hmm. I did that. See map, can you try reading yours again, turning the video through? Can you turn on your video, see map? Okay, uh, Senator Ring, District.
Present.
Ridway, District Two.
Present.
Uh, Ross Kelly, District.
Present.
Rob Gibson, District Four.
Present.
B Thomas, District.
Present.
Commissioner, present.
Okay, so the first item in the type is unfortunately another part. Um, this time is Stephanie who's always. And so if you join me at the podium. Okay, leave it now. Great. Okay, so Stephanie, the, sorry, the Sanbini County Point Commission recognized any rec. Your plan for over three years dedicated service and advancing the county launch plan, housing policy, and cannabis related programs. As lead staff for twenty twenty-three, twenty-third one housing momentum cycle date, Stephanie successfully coordinated with Carlton, state agencies, and the Blake, the chief, planning commission, and board approval. And continue to share the county resident reasons to get to CD implants. Then also the initiation of the current safety element update, organ and broad community participation partnerships, local sees, and bungalow beach. As having coordinator, Stephanie implemented major updates to affordable housing regulations, coordinated all city housing reports, and managed complaints monitoring for restricted use. She also processing fifty-three unit type family of full home development and head to server line income ribbon. As campus coordinator, Stephanie led twenty twenty-four reform of the case control cannabis licenses, remove barriers to entry and establish successful program. Her reps have voted in permitting of two merch sites going three two hundred and sixty acres of campy. Stephanie all provide key support from ongoing office dates, reports, presentations, or act officials, court very commissions, and Queen of Court planning mission, committee and acts, men's public injury, and pastors collaboration through scaldation. Her professionalism, mission, and commitment to public service have greatly enhanced the county spending and policy goal. As take this step in your professional planning journey with City of Greenville, we express our sincere attitude for your contributions, issue continued success, dedication, and passion for immune empowerment will. Okay, thank you. Absolutely.
I'm really sorry to see Stephanie Ling. I've had pleasure working with her on a lot of projects, um, the housing, very affordable housing issues and projects, and it does its loss for county. It's unbelievable how hard this woman has for us. Nighting is for her and sad to see her. Thank you so much for all the work you've done for this county.
Thank you. Any comment around item? Yes, Arrow.
So I'm here, um, to talk about, because I'm towards Stephanie for three years. Um, not only did I have the pledge calling her a colleague, but she's also a friend, um, and a family member. And, um, her dedication to the county just untold. She came in and I threw the book at her and said, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do this. And she just did it with a smile. She did with her work. I'm gonna tell you that your housing element won't be here tonight with her. She literally go over to a single person, you need this to meet today. It would have been housing element to be like a two out if it wasn't her. And that benefit not just to, to everyone in the community that, you know, having that kind of level of education. Um, and then for a policy, she tried, she started in how to write a policy. She then trained us. Like, that's, that was at. Your incoming jacket, nerve hour took it together and it didn't know how late. There was, we were at the office at Ted Talk and introducing. Play commit packet, make sure it out to public. And not only that, but she fostered incredible teamwork, um, making sure everyone felt like included, um, thought about. I mean, you would throw the, you know, bush things, birthdays, just really making sure everyone felt really special and we're all going to that. I'm gonna sit, well, because I love her and because she's family, that's my kid. And so I just, everyone was, that's their thing. So thank you.
Thank you. The commentaryists.
I'm your chair.
Yes.
If I, yes, I owe all the gentlemen from Saturday. Stephanie, she came, she was one of those all of that was into the career, not the three pairs I can, a bit over years ago, and have you to go into the career. And like Ariel said, it was a bit of a dream process, but she made an Arthur master's degree and ready to hit the, hit the road, um, and, um, very efficient on the housing aspects, even on camp affairs. If needed, her to all help in main matters like division or what, she would not fail to, um, move forward and help with that and, you know, always a champion with what all of, and then you, Chen Mason. Uh, Nina, do you want to be a conscious of the land and you regulatory ensure of and after the policy and sometimes I can be a conscious of with Stephanie, I mean, whether we. How now with the number of the place who had issues concerns or full blown out, Congress room shut off, full, where we had to be a certain situation and, and always, um, has felt really good. And like Ariel said, also, and the fast that beautiful environment at work, bringing them out is all passing. So Rick, Margaret, and Steph is so many to the.
Other commentaryists? Okay, thanks. And you, Stephanie, for all your work. I has noted, really appreciated. Okay, move on to item five point one apartment, the I five apartment, which will include the point. Sorry, phone is on here.
Oh, see, if you could pull up screen. Okay, we're gonna go over the twenty twenty-six calendar for planning mission meets. So planning coming meet the third Wednesday of every month at SPIM. So, um, we'll, you know, go through every single meet date here, but here's your calendar for this year.
Thunder night, so yeah, I appreciate that.
Um, so I just need motion to a calendar and I can set all the things for steer view. So.
There's a, okay, all those favors here.
I.
Any boost? Okay, motion rate is at zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephanie. To chairs of the commissions, you know, I you provided brief for kidding all new applications to come in. At production pack, we actually had re-applications, question permits that, um, are submitted. They were fully submitted. There were some permits, so we're gonna back, look, make sure they were fully admitted. And if they are, we will bring those to you in the, at the planning mission meeting to, to inform you of those products. Um, it is very fleet as we recommend Stephanie, uh, will be leaving on Friday. So beginning next Monday, the, the plant department will be with only one plan for the county of Monito. At last day, this past day, uh, our building director, he are most there, he also left to the city of Anvil and, um, only had one building back for the whole city. The good thing that we have, we do have a relief who has time to time their own call and we can, we can go tap them when we them to, to us. Um, some of the plans I have right now, we will do a budget soon, hopefully that people adopt and, and transfer response value to consultants. So with the system, also have a, a group consol by the name MP, group has this planning mess. And the thing about is that a lot of the is a hundred cent recovery. It's, it's actually before by, yeah, and developers. So we're gonna make it work as best as possible to do, um, to try to keep the department so, and, um, we'll continue to work to do that. We have jury push and so a goal of the domain will be to before the copy board and ask if they can freeze the participants and hope allows to hire. So just one little bit of the, uh, we'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving into item number six, which is public comment, and this, uh, can a little confusing. This is not public comment about the evidence on agenda. This is your opportunity to address the point commission on items that are not in agenda but are with the purview of the point command. So if there anything that you want to talk about that is on agenda, uh, please, uh, submit a card if you haven't done so already. Yeah, Stephanie, you run part.
Um, I have no look in your survey.
Obviously, alright. Uh, moving into number seven was the consent agenda. Uh, the items are considered to hold without discussion unless a petition is requested by member of the commission staff, probably to be removed from the consent agenda. So the consent agenda tonight insists of acknowledging certificate of posting for tonight's meeting and removing draft unit, minute from meeting of October fifteenth. Are there corrections or actions to minutes or ample? No. Okay. Uh, in case, uh, is there any public comment in the consent agenda?
There is no comment being reviewed on the consent agenda.
Okay, and I think motion be entered.
A motion proved there.
I.
Opposed. Thank you. Consent is approved. Moving on to the regular agenda item point one, does a client's view between county of a different grant between county and Penno Valley sober. Uh, the, um, I don't see everything on the screen here. Let's just go in the presentation, pick it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Today, the county has currently, uh, act development agreement as previously consistent time and for course sound hope and O C S Valley. Or both valleys, sir. Commissioners reviewed three of, uh, four this year for periodic compliance, the development agreed. And to thank someone will be considering periodic clients view of the development agreement by NBD County of Monito and Penno Solar Valley LC, which was coming from regular commission in September seventeen twenty-five. With a certain, uh, periodic client's view, DA is opportunity developed to indicate how they've been in the compliance development agreement. And one of the, uh, central, the central county nineteen point seven point zero twelve, uh, hit the official quote, have burden writing clients a public key before the commission. Cool. And today we have representatives of R D E for much value, including Esprint, Asset Management West, R W, Shannon, and she'll be presenting today shortly. Position nine eleven, twelve D, the San County code of planning shall up written resolution supplying commands with the dominant perception of that code. Evently commission fans, the good faith commands with terms and conditions agreement have been illustrated, the commission shall review matter on what's recommended to the board super. The project consists of two two hundred and twenty-seven milliwatts located ultimately one thousand one hundred eighty-eight acres on an overall one thousand five hundred six acres. And involves a nation of ultimately one million double dick goals. As you have heard, this Weta Bay has been ongoing issue the project as of the, as a planning mission meeting, our department and co-teams have operated on this map. The notice of violation spent since, uh, or shoot to each of our solar, acquire Weta Bay with the following direction, um, to meet the hazard according to a dusty watch the city line from the soul ray. Defense three per a way manager made a game plan, four establish fires to agree with the air fire department, and five approve the fire risk agreement. This is for seven twenty twenty-five, the commission, uh, Chief John Golding, I have communication regarding the first aid agreement and children indicated a five agreement had reached. And it's provided as part of your planning mission packs. Fire Golding and Chief Charlie Oya are here, sent to its questions on the Weta Bay and the fire risk agreement. At this time, it's okay, the chair and the commission, we can I Shannon Monet, page on the periodic clients at the development agreement. And then like fire Golding, uh, Chief Dollar, uh, present or can be, who are present, can answer any issues regarding the safety of the surveyment.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me to fall. Um, so the, the stack that we provide here, um, I'll just quickly run through. So, um, this is the Hubble overver project, and then we continue through the developed service agreement, each of the harms. Um, so we are fully client through the developed service agreement, um, and regarding the notice of violation we received, um, we have gone through and the deed amendment. Um, we've added in additional measures to make sure that the, this is fully client that we have issues in the chair. Um, and we have established our fire assessment. We've been working with the fire department in establishing a good ownership, um, and just going to be a good business partner. So if we two, I can walk through any of these items or just put it up versions on a slide here.
I wouldn't hearing a brief walk through each of the line item and chart, and I think there's might be more too much.
There's quite a few, actually.
Well, no, I mean, of the, the things that are, that are related to lines, but please go ahead.
Okay, um, so under developments, this agreement, the project was required to, um, conserve the mission lands, um, we have on, uh, and it to be the own space or nine to ratio. Uh, had to be the sales tax payment, and we've paid four point two five million in sales taxes, San Bill County. Um, it also regards some uncompensations paid two point five million to county towards the main side of the project. So we have get that to the county, leave that paid back in twenty-eight. Um, the community benefit fund, um, project was to pay the thousand for Kennedy selected slur or public fit products. And so it was back in twenty eighteen. Uh, there is projects to develop, um, education and research program. And so we've had to call students tend at the lower farm, um, and we've established some presence for, um, ongoing education. Uh, and we had the annual pilot payment, um, due to counter and has paid each year, um, in current twenty twenty-five. For the decommissioning fund pins, um, we were going to pay me six thousand five hundred per may bought insult, adjust by the CI fund. It's two eighty-five years that was paid in May twenty-three, and a twenty-four, and next payment is due twenty-two. Um, for annual reports, we buy the roll annual monitor reports. Um, I think the last, most recent one was sold in May, um, and then filed in next year. Um, the water conservation, so we to limit panel one to conserve water, uh, what we've been doing leading the project to, um, they would control the groundwater. So we limit amount of surface water, um, we've completed that the county requirements. Then we're to for purchase, purchase credits from a C F W, prove bank, create a permanent conservation unit, um, so bank credit for purchase, and the conservation segment was established. And believe this for the last ones is have, um, general compliance with environmental plants, and so we've referenced some of the plants that we actually have there, which include. The mitigation, stormwater pollution, and, uh, first cement plant, light plant, have hat duration, a revitalization, and EV and conservation strategy, and equal conservation plan. And the wet mitigation monitoring. And so our client, each of the agreements. And then we've kind of broken up the notice of action.
Sorry, I already turned my phone off. I realized it was on. Uh, can you through, uh, a couple, or excuse me, of the things we're done to resolve the violation?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um, we have here, um, for the note of violation, there's for code vegetation manage, um, that is where we're to, um, the, to have the, um, ground to L T panel system. Um, installed the accordance with the section of fire cut twelve, um, point five five, um, and the panel have been involved per code. For GT control, we were supposed to have clear brush in feet, um, around perimeter, around, around all panels. Um, so we actually established at less than initial, uh, ten feet. So we've up to twenty around the panels. Um, for vegetation management for the fire code, we were supposed to maintain, um, the vegetation, um, under six inches, and we've actually gotten it two inch. Um, then we're main in defensible space, um, for instructor of a hun feet, which we've done on any defensible structure. Then additionally, um, so that is at night, um, we've ensured that the night, you know, is in condition and that the dress of the vegetation management is there. Um, then for just during, um, like it was stalled to prevent fires, so we've established a fire service agreement where median, where, um, train R B is on, you know, preventative measures for ensure that there's no fires on site. Um, then we also have, again, some of this is redone, but it was to average fire serve agreement, then provided a county which we've done. Um, and then also just sure a restful raise that we cleared the meter, which we run from, uh, two feet to eight feet. And then we actually installed additional, um, measures at the site. So we installed what we referred to as an hole. So it, it actually tracks and texts there is, it has smoke and worded that would be smoke at night. Um, we all have now a, what we refer to as bulldog. So it identifies a spot for any panels to, as if there's issues, and we can get any mitigating efforts before the new. Um, and then we also have installed for water tanks. So the fire department use the for not just our site, any low fire. At the last fire that heard in Ouch, they actually use that right. So that will be really good. Then, um, we also just continue to work with E F W. That site in particular has haging issues to the fact that we are under a T P with C F U and U S and Y. So we're able, you know, have it down to regular, like in other sites. And so, uh, the sheep had beating the vegetation. So we've two to come with other location for it to get the vegetation out. And to kind of bring all action items.
Thanks. Um, another question from the mission for the, uh, not applicant, but for the representative.
Oh, good evening. I'm a lot of students, actually. So I didn't see, I mean, my old packet and this packet, uh, weed control plan was something that you mentioned that I missed.
Um, so we've stood over the county, uh, then we have it. So I, I stood over it serial previously. I don't know if it's to you.
Is that the packet I said missed? I don't want after. I mean, September made it was still clear. I want to see everything before this meeting. So my assumption is that they do it. Um, so apparently it wasn't your fault.
I can understand, Mr. Um, I was making him fire the priority, they just have they receive it, um, with this around, uh, it's like they had provided to Eric, but I, I didn't get it. So I will look through it and read it and send it over to fire domain. Um, as I, I put them in the end that they receive it. So it's like, it was submitted to, to the priority, but else. And so that were, it was.
I'll make that reference on her appointment card. Okay. That's okay. Um, so how many fires have been at that site since the eighteen?
Uh, do not that exactly.
Okay. Have any of the blur panel indents with the fires?
Uh, I had a couple of them, yes.
It's not just a couple. It's like hundreds, thousands that have burned.
Mike, you want to speak that?
Asking, just want to know if you, if you need these those ten.
We actually have space on pipes. If there's panel, we're able to go replace them.
That's brandy. So how many panels were burned to the, you have a dead fire or something that?
So the, the most recent, we had back panels were burned, they did not need to replace the, still produce, and looking at putting a, a spray on action on those place, so we'll not replace.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Uh, that's it. Uh, let me do my peers. We control. So if you email, we control complete, and it's better than, no. Uh, we have fire agreement and fire is used. Um, I noticed there was none there notify county that ceased. So I guess we have some monitor at that contract follow that, you know, there in clients, and that will issue county. So somewhere in there, need to make sure that word of.
We make sure notify that we have.
I think, I think maybe there. Um, we don't have a current issue of what the looks like. You can't, you can't control leads because.
So we're under, um, an initial take with, uh, the F W and US Fish Wildlife, um, but we, we would, uh, with both them and working amending my team. Um, so we're able to take some location first to it both down.
Okay, I've passed by a couple of sole facilities and there are no weeds. And I could say that out to Penno, so no idea what it's like. I could try to run that out. I'm just curious what it like and if there being a fire. I want to make sure we don't have enough fire for lodderments.
Right, do, do we, um, I saw my phone, we can email them around all, um, recent photos. I was actually at this today and took a couple of those. Um, but we, because we've been, um, endangered species there, it is why the lodderables are what you can do with the environmental group.
So they burn a little endangered species. I mean, it's kind of cap product to me. Um, have you, have you built a helipad on that? Okay, as it says, and, uh, it's, it's a C T L, the addition applicant has agreed to strike helipad on the seat. According to A M has that five, so I'm just upset seeing that Tony couldn't follow up on it since it is part agreement. Uh, I guess that is all I have at the moment.
I have a book, Kishner Scotty chanting bit.
Mm hmm. Thank you. Thank you, here. Um, I just traveled to Colorado, went by thousands, thousands acres of our panels. And one of the weed on the bare dirt commission, since I don't know you can't there in free time and say, and those panels, when grass starts to kill it off. There'd be a reason that stopped the whole problem. Can't allow the grass grow, no, it down weed, because all you put dry grass on, put dikes, and it doesn't make sense. All. So you've got to figure out a way to keep the ass going. Yeah. Like I say, thousands of, by thousands and thousands of acres, I'm looking, there's, there's nothing under these. Here is the county we allow.
So, so when the project was, um, part of, because of these injured C Cs, the armor permitting that would require the county to sign form, we are allowed to take the ground to bear.
Then why allow it to get there? If we can't contain a nuisance, then we allow it tilt.
Let them learn the future. Not repeat same like.
We are dear by the kit as low as possible.
It doesn't matter. The mid drop is gonna burn. The thinner it drops, you are ninety percent, maybe, I mean, smaller, I mean, take whole thing, you will fire. It does take much country, I want to get a hundred and ten degree, no humidity, to start fire.
And I'd understand the concern, also not one of the fire, also doing everything we can, working with US Fish Wildlife and C D F U, C amendments and maker. Um, we're also into comply with, with listeners, so.
You probably were on managers of fire and you would spring, spring.
Leaving out mission. Okay, other questions? I have a lot of questions.
Couldn't answer, I understand, how many fires been, but we to the root fire, have we figured it out?
Yes, we have, uh, we have, um, nominees on the wire man, you know, send resolve the nominees. Uh, thrown the book at you, we've had up fifty people there going and spaming resolving issue we own.
So is some short out, or are we thinking about?
Yeah, the chief pinned kind of wrong and caused it to kind of fray a little bit in the hot spots. So went in it and, and wrestled the found and cut it out and placed it.
Okay, so I was thinking a little ringing, and I've looked through COG, most fires on lower forms are pouring station to four mains. So that was what the red not be here. Let me ask you, how often you said through the, how often does somebody walk through and take a look to if there's any braiding thing?
We're doing daily, and then we talked about on the slide, we have a remote robot that looks like Ollie, he will, will go in down there, was it's a infrared sensor. It's got actually a person in a crawl room, monitoring, it's up hot, put in a report and sends it to plant, uh, missions, and then we'll go back out to those areas and dress it, whatever. So that'd be a pro act measure that we had or that we've gotten to play here and finding success.
Okay, uh, are these monitored, uh, you know, online in other words, could some look at and lie determine there's potential problem, this section panels or, or, you know, any way to monitor that online?
Yes, we have, we have scan controls that we monitor and set up some control on there, kind of monitor a little bit, I'm gonna look deeper into the weeds of the D self. Uh, do you think there is anything that not, uh, that, that, or, for lots, it will. Trying to get similar, but we're looking out to the deal to see if there's any producing, which would, there's some good problem, we somebody else inspect.
It's actually monitored locations.
Yeah.
Okay, um, get back to some, I, this picture here, it shows, I think a fire that was, and then you see it's not for over here. I think that was age two, a packet. Um, how did the panels do? If there's a fair, how those those do, uh, do you lose all the panels?
You know, the fire and getting, you know, um, it just maybe more about eight inches to, uh, say eight inches off the ground, heat high enough to cause damage to hands on, on probably the one you're looking. The one we did have something underneath, and so we'll look to re-oat, but those ones are still producing.
Got you. Um, and a little, um, what's a good, maybe you tell me, what does it would say about what grass should be under a panel? Should they be zero, cinches? Maybe the fire can help me. What does fire code say, uh, has to be done underneath panels, places, component that I've seen are burnt, and that's it. I'm so a little confused, I have it, my initial, but I'm a little confused. Can, can city tell what the code says? Should it be one inch? Is it allowed six inches? It's allowable. I had something said zero, that's I'm trying to figure this out. So in the national NFPA, I have it said zero. So it's since that's acceptable. It's an inch, it's not acceptable. It has zero, that's what the code says. It doesn't allow salander or any, sorry, that, that, it says zero. So if you can tell me somewhere else where it's six inches, it should be zero. Right? If you're following, you're following our fire, it's zero.
Um, we're following from the salvation park, that's where I was there, um, what called out to reduce their load.
Okay, I'm just going, what NFPA said, I think it was zero, so that's why I'm trying to figure that out.
Sheriff Hayden, for what it's with, um, just want to interrupt, I had the opportunity when I was down in Larry a couple of weeks ago, to, uh, to, for the Rex one solar, so which is thirty-eight hundred acres of panels. And I believe produce three gigawatts, if I'm mistaken, uh, I must be mistaken. Anyway, in any event, a unit, so, and I was stashed tea that was not there dirt. Uh, I don't know how they did it, why they did it, it was not dirt, it was probably almost an inch of grass.
So they weren't complaining.
I don't, I, I guess you're right. I don't why.
Unfortunately, when, when go to all the house or do thing out, we have to follow the code. So if I would, you know, respectfully say, average, oh, to follow the fire code and, uh, all the restrictions we have, then we find a maze panel for complaint to allow. Not sure if that's spread, maybe you something to add that.
Uh, yeah, I was going up, uh, to a ranch one in the person building, ten new solar panel farms like they have on highway five, they're gonna lumber north, not a blue grass under. Nothing. The one, Mr. We saw it away, must be anomaly with this one, because everyone that saw zero, no grass, nothing, pure dirt. What they're doing, I don't know. Putting down, they're putting down, um, uh, sterlet in the soil or something, but there were no.
So, I mean, I have seen many objects, and we, in this particular area, it's one hundred danger B C, we don't have any species that drive our products, and we'd have the same requires we have to comply with. And how was proved for, for holding, you know, this whole, it was, but for most of ours, we don't actually have the requirements, and we have any species that are into protect there.
If you change the spray underneath the panels, I've checked, there's some go up there and say, please, I know, I'm, why, I know what I can and not use in certain situations. And I'm sure the capital you can find to put there, that won't end a species still, but you need to.
Okay, so Charlie, there was there. So the couple of things, so where the, we haven't read that, and we're seeing further the instruction, but I've seen those out one spit to make your complaint. As far as the under the base, it's a resi area, and I'll put them on the part. Life see trumping, so if it's not cut, where they have it, it's gonna happen, or they're gonna go down the bare of soil, which it absolutely says, I'll work on that part. There is pre-emergence, there is some emergence that are safe to watch. We need to go do it in sequo, when, when we are, we have been planned, roads, cycles, and to the ways and the cap. They're able, though, there is obstacle to help keep the from cup through that too. So that they can, we could wear them on that right there. So.
There is what to get there, there is, there is to get on. So there's been done already, so whether it does county, other money and fire something, to put fire out, did not in the half.
And they did have a, a fire a week ago, but we had a break as it was due to whack, so we'll cover a break, and it was, couldn't know because it had downs, didn't get bigger, one inch of spot, so, right, didn't get out there.
Early, what's the cost of truck that one time back? Cost of truck from station room up there and back.
Well, to serve, I mean, it depends. The cost of me, I was firing nowadays.
It fries out, and so, uh, it gets funny. I'm a hard dog.
Well, that's why we're working, providing, so long as we communicate, have our emails, haven't got any emails, the fire hasn't got any, so we're ready. As soon as our meeting like that, we're going, I'll, I'll be more than to get there as bad as days to get client, like it. Safe trumps, the critters, safety for people, the adult, that's their livelihood out there, and it's home there, so that everything else, we need to ensure we're content. We want to check their investment. We don't want to be losing money for fires, you know, we want to make you money, and touch, protect their investment.
It looks like Tom is waiting for something finished.
Oh, and right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm sorry. Um, so far from what we've seen, because we count for vest schedule, I, I thought at three curbs, there was hopping curves, was caught spark in some connects out, just like that, it's easy to take. The wires that cut, caught in the gears, and would cause a short, a couple, few of those too.
Got it. That's why they made this important, seeing cracks such as those, watch paint, you can see them, and if, if imaginable panel, it's hard. I would say, I want to really know who, because of the previous fires, was what a, was a solar panel. Was what a, was a solar panel that why it was sparking, was that actual a break at a, was it? Because that's important part of maintenance that.
There's a numerous one, the only reason we would call, I think they've mediated it by having onsite ropes. We call because the cars would fight a fire because they'd big calls both when the fires are too big.
Got it.
So now litigation's early to tend from them, so we'll be a catch a little sooner and without, we'll be able to take care of a lot sooner for them. And have a personal site.
I imagine if, if a sheep or if through addition gives for it, that that was no longer produced. So as well, you look at the monitoring, say we have panels producing, what's reason that it potentially fires her? That's what makes thing to be in a maintenance law.
That's that we're getting whole perimeter out to make sure we're getting the murder, and fence lines taken care of because that is gonna fire and you'll see a thing going through. Because it just blow so hard there, just put it in that, so you'll get your, when they're near, wind blowing hard through there, so hopefully got it down. When we go expect, we'll be a verified server.
And let us know.
You know, first, and then I'll let it with a couple, too. And then we do, we do, vote for, and do whatever you do, because it's all about safety.
Okay, thank you.
The owl and bulldog that you spoke about, those like the online that guys that tech, all of that, that the smoke you said owl and the bulldog was like a hustle panel. So people are on site, actually, oh, we gotta go out here, check out and usually.
Those are additional measures that we add in.
Okay.
Also like this technology is, I'm including to that, and see or something, I don't know, you're seeing, right? Do have boys a site that are able to go up and have water links there. Um, they're also in trade, part of the reserve agreement is our bases are trying to put out fire and we're working with the department, I think we established a good relationship where um, we having inspections quarterly where come out and also we share, you know, ideas, um, and they're able to walk the system, make sure that everything is in clients.
Uh, do you guys, I didn't forget, is it a micro inverter, big inverter, the control?
Two ladies on burger.
Okay, so full.
And then to answer your quick, your point about the wiring and downgrade, we are not receiving the hangers like like. We've now changed to all aluminum hanger, they'll not fray or get uh, uh, from, from heat sites that will get, uh, these will be the floor paint uh, up there. So the technology, if you sense that plant built, common is used, particularly now we use aluminum.
Good. Yeah, we appreciate that, it seems we can get control this. I mean, with all monitor systems that we have and technology and AI, you wouldn't, the fire port of this uh, very minimal. Thank you.
Shannon, we brought the controls in the secondary, so you have extras on when, when the, the same is in the, we pass on, ended on, there's always highs on.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Tom, did you anything? Okay, next question.
One more question, uh, you said water tanks uphill, there's water. Do you have like air stations throughout properties, so that's pressure room, so the fire department can get to have personnel site, but all fire with?
Yes.
Do you have little fires since the project?
So have a water below, so they're able to, the water extend on each buggy to have uh water or fire gusher, so that I think I'll put it out.
Thank you. The water does, you, you've seen that, yeah, thank you.
Okay, and far as quotes from, so one of the person being is chief, is at the benefit of hearing all questions answered, my colleagues have done an admirable job of, of uh, you know, discussing the things I was concerned about as well, so I don't have anything personally uh, to, to, to act. So I guess, uh, let's put no enough public comments.
Does anyone wish comment to sign? There is no comment in here, so it would be.
Okay, thank you. And please we'll bring it to the mission, red discussion and venture action.
Just a kind of tidless, depending whether or not to find them in plants, I'm extremely disappointed they're past and probably preference. Definitely want to say, but next year, make sure there's enough of the grass, I know what, um, because next year, I mean, you're not in compliance. If we used to find compliance here.
I, I wonder, are we gonna have, uh, and that's to be the major issue, the, the fuel and the panels. Is, is it getting up to a C if, if uh, maybe I'm understood, if it was gonna be taken all the way down to dirt or if one is acceptable, or remind where we're. Or clients.
Yes, and we will let, one of the things that has been mentioned is that there was mitigation measures back two thousand and ten, this was approved. And because of the endangered species, there is, there is requirements that there had to be a stream out. But we can try to see what we do, see if there's a possibility that like Commissioner, if it go lower or the spread can be used to allow for that. The mission measures have, have to met, so that's part of the, the day, uh, the compliance should, should also in the, but in where the fire department, uh, with early can try to be higher, low can, it can get. It don't mean the mission for the.
And then right now you can show us that's one inch.
I just saw it there.
Okay, what's the speech that we're talking into that's the problem here?
Some of the multiple endangered species, um, to have a plan. I know that upward surge, there's um, the.
I'm the captain, you. So the three injured species, there's lizard, there um, the kangaroo, we called, and there's squirrel, and there's one threat species, fox. So there are four protected, three injured, excuse me, tighter species on site.
And I'd like to read her, we said, you know, safety, I mean, I have bad lizard, squirrel, hate is a life. And so what more people here?
Agree, and it just, the commission working fully with C F W to try and find these options to, to step down, human life up. Uh, but you have these issues to see the cornea of efficient life, these species, so we're trying to that.
Squirrel, I'm curious, is that common one squirrel?
He's like, no, no.
Thank you for note, you're expected. For, for starters, can note, if ever a solar facility comes over to proposal, make sure there's a single protective species place.
Further discussion with the commission then? I guess, um, eventually motion be in order. Or motion to, to find them uninclined or motion to.
I think we need to remember, this is could probably not be popular. This was twenty ten, it was bolt, and I, a hundred percent life is more to send some critter. Um, leaning to this, meaning I've been involved for very long, but it looks like to me that they are trying to comply. I've joined you in Nevada and seen, oh, nothing, wipe out the dirt, nobody in my heart, and it's, it makes me, but I feel like they're really trying to get to that zero and twenty ten to, to now.
That's it.
How we, sad we can't.
Yeah.
You know what?
I, I with you, if it came before us now, maybe we wouldn't be so anxious to prove, but the fact is built, it's errors.
It's like, you'd take fifteen years for them to get fire, but it could have been fifteen years ago, as well, we'd have been planned, could have been fifteen years ago, I'm, I'm, I'm crying for it.
No, we'll agree.
Could have been a long time ago, and if the county let it go for a whole series, it's inexcusable.
That's the county's fault, more than is the county's fault.
Uh, both.
But I, I agree, but I, now we have the fair and everybody, they are now trying to willing go out and, you know. I'm, I'm not saying I'm approving, just upping, I'm saying I think there's now a piece of work put you and gonna be held accountable.
They're taking it seriously, it means they're taking it seriously.
How many, how many fires would there been in the first years to any fire, there been a lot of year, tell you a lot about what's being obtained.
I don't know.
I think so. You could take, for example, those fears, fires, burning herb and how fire they're in the inning, as to pair you, how relatively safe has it been over the last five years? You should watch, we'll forgive them for weed making, but any fire have started the panel or local issue that in the last few years.
And they are, so I, I'm comfortable as the department, go ahead and, um, after night. You remember, so, and, and okay, one inch, uh, as you look at lanes with lanes, usually it's half games, the pool, and so it's, if it's driven, the higher we get. Three inches maybe, lame length, if we have so, but I am gonna hold it that, and I had to make the R D that, so I said, call me, I'll become on, we'll inspect. I'm still gonna hold a plan, we'll find, we'll find them date, if that case, and we need to hold the C E, we can uphold the U P. So I have a problem with that, I'm pretty sure they'll be applying, um, with the fire chiefs on a good, we're linked with them too, so. He feels confident, I'm confident with him, confident we get to you tonight.
Good, I've given you some content.
I appreciate your content.
To you guys, uh, the measure is faith lines here, so it's, it's compliance, it's faith, so that's what determination.
Thank you.
What a question for, for, at what point is a ground that grab are you guys making a week? At two inches, one inch, inches, tenths, where are you guys making a hold it to the one inch? But you don't have a lot of growth on top of that dry, so at what point are you think I'm going to clean up?
They have a big job ahead of them, it's not, it's not be main all the time.
But you, but you know what I'm making?
I.
We have early, early main there, so right now, I bet up there NASA is already tall.
And they're already, they're better on it, I understand it.
It's so, the longer that it, the more you down, we, we offer the dryer that's.
It's gonna be annual, it's like.
But gaily, gaily.
Fire season all year round now, so they have to maintain annually, if they get it far beyond, they're planning to, they're gonna be having problems, so.
Hold it to one inch, they're gonna have to go tomorrow and start in.
They understand that it's be, okay, it's on goal, just maintenance, just like.
Okay.
And maintenance, car mainly maintenance.
Rap is, is fight against animals like fucking taking round up, so go up there, start now, handle the rep.
Like, I'd like we have some safe, safe emergency, that are fine. Yeah, yeah, so already a percent bad it was, but I would go out, there was absolutely um, a fight, no, we're not gonna do it, we're just not doing it, we're not gonna do it. I heard that lately, and what I've seen is, I've got a lot of taking rattling and rolling and um, pressure tests, they have pressure on them, they have a switch, get on, get like about a hundred and five P I out of. So we'll be filling lines, so it's not just a draft, or not just a tank. Well, I, I'm not prepared to vote in favor of the, because I really want to see that weed control, I mean, that was pretty cruel to me, and I appreciate your comment. Uh, I'm not confident, um, I don't see word, I want to see what practices are. And I would just see a video of what it's like, pictures of what it could look like, and be told what plan is, if I didn't, I'd like to hold your plan, because oftentimes, people ask what we wanna hear. And if you go back and look, fine, well, it wasn't exactly that, you know, we're, we're doing this, we're doing that, and we're gonna, every comes up stories and then if it's written down, and even it is, is we've with this, even it's written down, people don't follow through, if we don't after, it doesn't done. So I would like to continue as I can see that control by myself, and I'd all like to hear about what's gonna happen with the permit. And the weeds big to me, burning, burning rancher's grass isn't acceptable, that's the way of life, you know, they're gonna have hay to feed cattle, hoop for it, and they had a court. And there's, and wildfires, and uh, I'm not comfortable being yes to say that the compliance at this. I myself like to have continued for at least a month to, to have a chance to better understand what their control plan is. Cause it'd be one now, and that could be say they're gonna do, but from the, and then, and end up more fires necessarily.
I would, I would pour it, I mean, I, I would also per existing components to not base in whatever, but I would be okay with continuing.
I would like to continue to, like Mr. Commissioner says, but I clad, what they're gonna do, and with some, just little, I'm, this has been going since two thousand and ten, there's this, so, um, I, I would. Can you wait?
I could feel the same one, that just, I think I put a grain of wind in the thought to what's said. But I, I almost feel like I'll go out and take a look myself, I really would just be because this grows fast, it's really hard to, you got a job for that. Um, and uh, I don't like to really see honestly, uh, maintenance, because it's almost an all around job.
Right.
To maintain that to one inch level, it grows fast, it's to believe.
So we currently have, um, we have you that we're trying to appeals for the herb use, so we spray, we're trying to get that in his puddles, because we're rainy season to be using. Um, we, we have re-executed at the company has been involved in project, right? Your import to it, your accounting thing to it, and we're, we've literally from hundreds of people trying to be at site, which would take us months, we've got down right now, is down below, you know, and at the site. Um, I have photo on my phone if you want me to show, I didn't get into pretty much, I didn't.
Yeah, and how, to remind me, how many go water, are we, you producing?
So it's a hundred and forty watt.
A hundred and forty watt? It's a pretty amount of hour.
And, and I wanted to explain, it wasn't in two thousand and ten, it was all twenty eighteen. Um, there was at twenty fifteen, like a lot of back and forth and monoliths, and oh, this wasn't actually built in twenty eighteen, so just wanted to know, we, we have dealing with for since back that time.
And maybe it's, there's a relation environmental group against the crane and the canny related to this, and was ultimately developed after litigation, and that's part of this kind of shape. Um, the altitude of yours at project.
And it say that our company perch the land, so if the purchase sees are six hundred acres, that, that just is, could also, you know, roam that part of land, and we don't have the requirement that we've been to.
Do you have a sense of you'll have agreement with Fish Wild, one, two months? Cause I see no reason to meet them and we have answer. As if they're gonna say, to three inches, six inches, whatever, efficient, I don't see reason to find you in clients, because I don't really care what this about dog and whatever else, I'm more concerned about fires. So I don't see a reason to meet though that thing result. I don't know when it be though, do you have a sense, one month, two, three months?
We're, we're in active discussions with them, but I, I could say today we will have firm.
You were, continue until the beginning in January, and hopefully that's, if not, continue again. At this point, we had a client during for you ever, this is the first one, we actually fought our rules, so I don't see a deal if we, if we a year.
And if we do find clients, how long it be for next compliant?
Another guy, see, get in the fight at that point.
I don't know.
Oh, it's better than moving it with, and being willing, clients doing what want to do.
It's not like their appetite for continuing, um, the question becomes.
January?
For when?
For two months. And if it, it doesn't work, then continue it again, I just see we should have, just for sake of proving, and it's not complacent, my opinion. A lot of known and not comfortable, moving it down.
I say until, until we work, and they back and worry, that gives them time to dish on D W, let them dish on department for a while, that's gonna be their job to make sure they can get it done. They have the power to put in the D up there a little bit, say, hey, we're having trouble here, we need to get it up somehow.
One.
Go to a, go to a reputable, um, eggs up there, knows, and jump out there, know you can, can use around any species. A P A, side control advisor, tell you exactly what you can and cannot use, that the double approved, there is chem, cheap, no, except, yes, they come down.
I think what we're in for potential continuing until February is so we don't have continuing again, for, for simple reason that it's an edition of the public. We publish that only considering thing, and people are not, which didn't really have to take prey, but just in general, people are not expected to be able to comment on, on the project, and then you end up continuing it, then gotta come back again potentially, and so it'd be good, we didn't continue it again.
I mean, it's a position, it's two, and then we have to go compare the pack to the new packet, it's, it's a burden, and on the other, that's what we accepted, and we did your jobs with some, some thought. So I will come on to continue this, I'm in regular scheduling of February twenty twenty six.
Six.
Okay, I was in, say.
I.
No, I can carry five euro, I didn't continue it until the meeting of February, which I don't have the date in front of me, but she does.
I don't have that on.
I appreciate your twenty ten, because that's a huge consideration for me, but now it's twenty eighteen and I really I have to agree, we need to get everything in our.
And the day is February eighteenth. So, thank you. Okay, switch screen here and move on into the public ring, and uh, thank you for your patience, the public hearing uh, is here. Uh, for items nine point one, I'm looking to approve, and it apps a by thirty six point two eight parcel to five point oh and five and eighteen and two five point seven three, at some forty four row. And uh, the benefit of any who not have attended these meetings before, generally the way this works is we hear report from staff. Then we have questions from the planning commissioners for the staff, uh, then move on into a public comment, and we bring back the commission for discussion and pension act. So uh, speed, thank you.
Good evening, Mike Kelly, C plant, I'm here to put this division, um, at Fort Lauderdale, P L twenty five, zero, four, five. Uh, this is uh, the third meeting, it's continued each time for separate reasons, but uh, it's, it seems to have gone through the um, review. Uh, I can't read, deep print, right on the part two names, so uh, the presentation will be like the usual structure, see uh, points. This is the locations, forty eight Lotto Road, which is near Tepene, so if you're down Kinse Road, do the main point with Lotto, you reach the roughly corner of the lot, and uh, the lot extends from Boro down to Trispen Creek.
Uh, cool, cool, that was just, I had seen that they're trying to interpretation.
Oh, sorry, okay. I should have missed that, I need to be conscious of that, thank you very much. Okay, so um, there, there was so much equate, uh, but, and here is where located. Moving on, the, um, here is, here's the product where you see the, uh, let's see if we can get the, the uh, it's subdividing into one, two, three parcels, three six point or two acre parcel into three lots, two of them close to five acres, one of them close to twenty six acre. There's no structure posed this time, uh, I'll say that before, after the subdivision, the amount of structure could happen is about the same. Uh, because of zone, which is so dependent on, uh, whether there are lots, it's more depend on, uh, there's like one wing per five acres that can done with drawing line. The difference uh, is that uh, accessory units are depend on lots. Uh, so that, there could be accessory units, there are improvements, otherwise construction post, um, within the site then. Uh, here, you see the, um, I'll just say, um, the uh, the parcel in this parcel are posed, the, uh, they're not posed for structure now. There is the existing residence on the larger lot, twenty five, seven acre lot, and also here down here is Trisno's Creek, there is flown down bottom, the rest is not in the zone. It's on site, uh, go to site, you'll uh, and you'll, the images are the scenes, you'll see the north third, Lotto Road, I see right here, you turn to your right, see uh, toward east, the neighbors, long, low road, um, distance, you can see it's in the, in the, near store park, the park, the fairgrounds, etc. If you turn around to the right, or you face towards Trisno's Creek downhill, and if you turn one more time, you face uh, west or northward toward, um, in the direction of, basically. Now, uh, of course, the project we carry to the general plan and to zoning, it's in prescribed, and uh, the land use out in the general plan, this is agricultural zoning, this is agricultural productive, both roughly same. Allowing uh, general agriculture, one wing per five acres, so that's five or uh, min or lots. Uh, while compared to the various policies, all the policies are in the J plan, uh, so that it's just our, uh, uh, where you hear, see um, the land use policy on the ability of small parcels, this is, this is that um, parcels under four acres are to be shown to be agriculturally viable. Particularly understood, I mean, that project starts with uh, uh, more than forty eight, and introducing lots smaller than four acres, that's the time to um, consider viability of smaller parcel sizes or agriculture, in this case, we have a lot is three six acres. Policy in effect, uh, numerous four acre lots will cross any, so in a way, it's not, kind of because on notion there hasn't, uh, uh, it has been available for, uh, or not viable for smaller parcel sizes, so um, parcel exists, the time is basically asked for, there be a creation viability, such already small parcel, that, and to the solar lot also. Um, the public services and services, it has policy on adequate water treatment and every, this project was continuing from, the frame it was continued, it was in part based on the work quality. And the straight there's adequate water quality, that had been said to the environmental division, and the reviews happened, environmental health has been satisfied with what you see, so uh, this policy is satisfied. The next policy, the, uh, see the, oops, trying to make this thing come. Um, the circulation policy on roadway dedication, this project does. Um, the circulation policy on roadway dedication, this project does dedicate roadway to the lot. And uh, so it also, the, the project so um, performs improves to below road. And that's why this project will continue at the second time, the 50th to night. Uh, does he have opted to work out um, so further have some other discussion with local engineer and what road input should be. And based on having uh, somewhat changed subdivision ordinance that has different end for improvements expected of this. So uh, this can happen and what you see resulting in that is issue needs that has a um, land of 140 rebuilt and big up effectively. Um, or the uh, the drive during this pretty. And the land sub policy sign policy agriculture land surveying, this land purposes, no construction proposes. Uh, the, the amount is starting louder than road and district dwelling is the same as what we allowed before. Have to know what um, how is, have to know what um, how is uh, applied with California, very much the act equal. Um, and whether are any subsequent impacts to concern in this case. In this case, we can, we can see with the, there's no significant impact, uh, who was see common sense application applied here. Uh, as I had more recent instruction from before, after, further than the three is possible improvements. Um, which those could really argue as being some impacting a significant impact. Uh, as road improvements that under sequel is considered. That under sequel is considered an existing facility, this would be expansion, the use of lot or not can edge and all mean is just minutes what already there. Uh, do you have improvement, but uh, uh, expansion of its utility qualities for exemption? And then whole property is um, not in, it's uh, any, any obligation has to, it would be intensive place still or land or uh, zone, zone, et cetera. So this part can be considered exempt, sequel. So staff recommend what you uh, see resolution. Um, we uh, recommend that review, half report, review the resolution being the fines and conditions of approval, including uh, um, action two six I mentioned. We are in your res publicment and you recommend to add resolution, including finding to prove this minor dividend subject to conditions of approval found in the resolution. Any questions if you have?
Thanks, uh, before we leave, like, cause one of the things I left out was explaining the order, which you think is we also give applicant the opportunity to make presentation if you wished. And I know that the app representative here, I don't know you to, uh, okay, well, we'll do questions from first and then we'll have applicants presenting up. Question from the mission for staff at a time.
Excuse me, I did to say I talked to applicant here the first time it was put, so something timber had a conversation with the.
Thanks. All right, then I said, if Ms. Hall, you want to say anything?
Good evening, Commissioner, I'm Ann Hall here behalf of the applicant and have one minute, but applicant also here is zoom, he be town, but I mean, he is zoomed like to skull. So um, we have with the county head back and forth, we do not have any real issue with the conditions as opposed. But I did want to clarify in condition three about underground utilities. Says all facilities in the division shall be center ground and we have issue with in future things, all electricals to be around. Also there's a long core streets and I ask that along core streets of the lot of road, the um, they're a large, there's a pole drop through the trisnos well. That I would not want the responsibility of this project um, to ground. And that's the only one, yeah, our French. So I just request that the word along pearl streets, which would refer to auto road, um, either be paved or struck or re wooded. I'm not sure you, if you have, you wanted that. But again, the believes with the subdivision, we understand those to be underground. At the point there is constraint, that is not a new for the African, we're just questioning um, the peripheral comment guarding peripheral streets be removed. And have any questions for me up here?
Through the chair, a couple of questions. I did see Aggie's an offer of an easement for the two five point whatever acres, twenty five point seven acres. Was that offered and he went with no other division?
No.
Okay. And uh, there's the lot of laws that laws with if we're divided.
The blue would have to be assured regardless because they're based on size of lots. So that'd be something you have to coordinate with our district. Um, it be, because it's being reached on the four, forty acre, thirty five acres on twenty five acres. We need to see what a lot to remain in the placard is, but would need to sit down. That'd be something, believe they have a content in here saying to coordinate that and what to work that out.
The vineyard on belches probably, um, and so, cause at one point they were going to get everything that were supplied organic. Um, none of the other people have livestock in the well probably. Didn't see an audit of being like a buffer to protect that if it, whether it's still organic, I had wide division of the well dogs. So there's enough to continue operation of the vineyard.
Don't that there need in intent put livestock on property, it's still here.
Well, they picked out seven acres of garden A, but on the other side of the road, the other other way there to be self. I'm just. Great, but if houses were, then they just sort of put livestock, then have an issue with food safety.
I'm, um, and applicant will speak next, and I'm sure he can speak to, don't believe his intent to disrupt the Aggie's in the area. I think that's something he can speak to as to how he want to uh, work that. But I don't see there's any intent to make harder to farm the area if that you're quite in.
So it's my concern, yes. The Aggie with further subdivision, I remain to five, some three or parcel and the.
This is not, this is not clustered zone, there's no requirement for an easement.
Correct. We did it with another project off of ferry route. And uh, we, we needed to put Aggie on remaining parcel. Otherwise we have the, uh, we're just confused to subdivide and we end with other engage, which I not want to see that side of this penis go from egg to five acre man. And I know that the applicant says for the children, we get told all the time and that low and bold for sale. I'm sure and later like percent of the, the lots come to us subdivision, everyone is just for family a year later. There's a sale lines, I don't know if they got their kid, what happened, but it's because somebody tells us something, we can't actually believe it. I'm, I'm nervous we're gonna start trending this side, trust me, that if one person says, oh, here's five acres, why don't I do that too? And all the vine get ripped out. Like vine state, one point you'd be an almond vine and now you up there and there's maybe four of those parcels have been, they're horribly active. So it just seen thing just here, our ag, our ag returns disser as we come, Jose's broom. So I have, I have concerns with this subdivision, actually all division.
But I understand that, uh, but I think the applicant is mine with zoning, which allows subdivision. So I'm sure how to address concern or when you do something that's out under the authority.
It also, also is that they end on utilities. I mean, you're asked for us to look the way and the rules and then bring in returns. Guess what the COs?
Under any rural utilities, on main roads is the new wave, uh, according to application I've brought before you on the past year. So I don't see that that's necessarily a request.
I have project independent.
I owe the applicants to be some of your concern.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you're gonna allow you unmute yourself? Um, we cannot cue if you're talking, hang on, let me try something.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, beginning of my question, um, the regional road you're talking about. Um, first of all, in terms of the uh, you know, food safety requirement that, you know, whatever you're gonna have livestock, there's not going to have livestock. But that, that relates to uh, vessels, there's no uh, food safety requirement, like, in fact, no presence in control in line rate in one. Uh, so it's very, you know, very, so what you're referring to absolutely uh, matters to vegetable crops, that does not matter to uh, wine grape. Um, so is there any questions on that?
Oh, when we had spider panic for once, we could have any livestock. So I'd see that would be an item for grapes.
Uh, well, again, wine grapes, uh, there, there is a requirement there. I'm sure the requirement for waters, I know, uh, won't let, and there's things like that, uh, you know, human matters uh, can be, can live certain environment. So anyway, that's not, that's definitely not a requirement uh, for organic, organic. Um, so there's no, no stack, anything like that between wine grapes and any parts like that. The green association, that's the uh, that the uh, group that says that, that says they have a stack between livestock and it doesn't have to be organic, but just any, any individual production. So I'm sure there's no stack required for wine, so much certain, I'm not sure how you verify that. There's a, that's, that's not a jurisdiction. Um, so I'm sorry about there person, you and you later, I just moved apart of any options there, the vegetable rates for the way. Um, and it was important for me here to support me there as well, that's why I'm on the do. Um, I do, I have a lot of experiences with the farming experience, uh, you know, stuff that I'm smart and something quite dodging. I love it, I love agriculture, I love farming, I love it, does it out there, vine state, has productive uh, vineyard. And um, obviously it's hot, uh, I do, you know, I have a lot of do as a suspect. I don't want to get my, you know, my whole rolling on that, but loving to do that. Uh, and our intention to do the same in our areas of, and you just keep it, uh, I'll keep it, uh, you know, productive, uh, as we really have that, you know, in the pleasure is like, you know, when. Wine grapes now that that's a way, way the market is, you know, uh, you're not getting that back, that's just unfortunately. And that's the use as a grant, it's certainly not viable for farming, certainly not, uh, because of uh, where it's at and it's just the name properties of people on. Um, you know, the uh, you don't understand for, for some challenges and other challenges on which they include, you know, the amount of violation, you know, really important thing. This is just part of the toughies of their farm, uh, you can lay a place, it's, it's most shallow, partly is uh, in the Welsh uh, property or farm, yeah, you're using more property primarily. Um, and uh, you know, so it's the downside is, uh, I guess what's a toughie there, you know, it's really intense, uh, very hard to water. That's rocky, it's remote, lots of deer, broken birds, you can't let me start running out there. You know, the reason that we pull the name out, like, there's thousands of markets for it. Um, and very tough, you know, with the, the purchase waste and everything like that. Um, I wish, I wish it was different, but it's not, it's uh, you know, it's just the best agriculture is happening, how you do the wine grapes. The parcels two million, remote for reaching eyes, uh, wine grape, I like that, doing things in my system, all those guys are coming back to be. Uh, they're, they're not incident, I tried, I've uh, uh, or what you were doing, the eighteen, twelve, fourteen years of left to go, my cattle, my hell. Um, there's nothing to that, and they're still going, working by thirty one year. Um, and that's just a little to everything I'm doing on, a little question I have on my own. Um, and I wouldn't have more to force as well, um, although we were trying to, I tried, I tried that. Hopefully, I really, really want to keep those grapes up, you know, around existing house and productive, it's very similar one of my own. In fact, uh, my grapes get combined with, with uh, you know, just one to one, you didn't just eat, they're very similar, uh, you get landed in the days. Um, so unfortunately, wine comes to us this time, I think you probably don't know what was going on in county. Uh, and large string wine, drink another thing and uh, five years, yeah, no, the plan, the venue, you have a lot of cost, I mean, because I don't think it's like they're old. Has to be probably twenty thousand dollars a month plus seven acres, seven thousand acres over years or you need returns. So um, you know, a market like this, you know, where there's just nothing to point at, get planted, any time soon, we'll be contracted any time soon. And if the assumption doesn't change, it's a fall, it's gonna be, you know, overshot for a long time. So, but again, as soon as this parcel is gonna be, or love more so than sound, and I already did that on the parcel one. Uh, this is, the, the best thing that we can do to keep it in, in my opinion, is obviously live there with kids, so they choose, they do around this property and hardship. Had a share in the load, you know, I don't want to see it be foul, um, like I said, I, you know, I love you, this is the work I'm doing. Uh, you want to learn, learn, like, I might have blew that out because of uh, I lose the fire on it. Uh, but I may be pulling out, but it's just myself. Uh, unfortunately, that's the state line is around, uh, but long term, we'll, we'll have to keep it back to fall, figure something out. Uh, we, you know, talk to somebody, produce a vegetable seed or possess some isolation. Uh, and uh, like I said, not do the whole vegetable, the vegetable seeds, yes, potentially, but again, that's a small niche market together, I'm working. Um, there again, best hope is, my hands are out, I'll be getting, and I have no intention of selling off, I can apply for, you know, four or five parcels, I think. Uh, all you want is to, you know, live there, our kids, hopefully live there, there's always something, my mom is in the family, that's why I stayed, my life, I'm far away there, as it is. And uh, keep saying, as I said, this is always, I'm crazy, this is a problem, I'll figure out, you know, something one way or another, but yeah, with the neighboring parts. And yes, whereas we get, uh, you know, somebody who wants to do this labor, I, I'm personal. I appreciate your consideration, let me know if you have any questions.
I, I do, I have a follow up. So do you, do you be willing to put a twenty five point seven, three acres in Aggie until last first subdivision of that parcel?
Uh, I'm not sure, it's just, it's really bad right now, I just, uh, I don't want to, there's all value, I know that. And um, in terms of uh, selling it in Aggie, uh, and I just, I have to think about talking parts, which is my family.
I have a question, you can, instead of getting into parcel, why don't you, your family, under it, share? So they all share and build a home, don't swing it up? And it's a complete whole twelve, thirty five, I think?
I mean, mainly because of financing, if they want to build one there, you know, I'm getting closer to retirement, they're younger, just in part of life, and uh, I don't, you know, it covers all things with, yeah.
Um, would you willing put deed written on the five parcel that can only be sold and built on by family members?
Um. I think I have on that, um, then we'd have to sell that.
Okay, you.
I don't think that's a, I don't think that's necessary, but uh, anyway.
Well, it's necessary sense that gives the commission a confidence that's not gonna sold off like, I don't think you said, the meantime gets broken, it's not what you said. It does actually says be, it's a family, family, people, vineyard in it, but without it, there's nothing that you can't sell.
Question for the applicant? Okay, so go ahead and open for put comp then.
Okay, uh, Jason, you've been muted?
Hi, good evening, you're here.
Speak him.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you taking this whole podcast where you're meeting this evening. Um, I forgot about the, my wife, I currently live in Montana and uh, I don't mind it, I'll be, so uh, I did want, my wife and I, Carol, uh, live across the street. We all have a duty from the lot of road, we all have a nine duty from the lot of road. Uh, we personally have no objections with the subdivision of the property across the street. Uh, I can see from experience that uh, the bringing in those have been tremendous, one of the stewards of property and community of county for decades. Uh, I have reservations about them, uh, have heard the property across the street or want to simply buy property for the benefit of the sons. Uh, I think, I think the question follows by, uh, commissioner, uh, given the only other questions, I uh, also disagree with the request of those to be considered as part of the string and subdivision. Even for reasons that incident and then the, the, the value of remaining property, this is something that I hope you guys remember. Months ago, when we were super supervisors were offering you a request to consider zone, which I'm saying, okay, I stood before that, even arguing that this was bad, this was my good for county account. That the attempt to downsize the property, uh, hurt property that the supervisors ordered to, uh, benefit. And we brought many, many people to the orders of supervisors, meaning following the high end commissions rule of that to move forward. It is not a farm to ranch, it burns that, it hurts the values of those properties. Uh, the, the other rest of, as they said, also mentioned, uh, that, that burns private property, right, for the animals again as well. It's, it's, we should go and borrow, it's our, we can build a home, let's not lie on my interest, they think, and separate parcel, it's much easier for the son to be able to farm, to build homes, uh, and, and, and live there. Uh, I just began to reiterate that we live there, uh, we have no objection to the subdivision, I'm gonna do to my day of resources for the sons. Thank you very much, have a evening.
Thank you.
I have no problem, oh, yes, sir, sir, please approach, I have three minutes.
Thank you for the time, uh, by us and cuts, as weapons have continued down this path, allowing a bigger uh, parcel. Their language are general plan that you can your head off, you don't approve parcel. Um, purpose, let's see, the zoning designation is facilitative agricultural activities, are, are articulated in general plan. Um, it allows limited low density residential development, well, prioritizing residential preservation of private land. And in particular, I, with respect to planning department, I love you guys, and the interpretation of the, the second, the general plan that was created here. This policy expects the project, but can seeking subdate agriculturally owned parcels to demonstrate ongoing feasibility of lots smaller than four acre or acre short. Applicant is not, not air application. Um, I think, um, it's hard when here that's the way of the owner, I really sympathize the owner wanting to must fan onto the property with him. I think in all relate to that, but in talking about the Ag possibilities, I don't, he foreloes the possibility that the land state in agriculture. So um, in the, in um, general plan analysis, in your staff reports about cumulative of five names, the number, I think, four or five other subdivisions immediately, area of five year parcel were allowed. And I, to me, that tells us that there's a cumulative effect continuing till these big parcels, we know it's gonna add, because longer it's gonna violate in the area. Um, no, we saw what happened over, you know, a year in the areas of every road, bring area, just talking on the uh, ad hoc Ag general plan group about, you know, look area like that. And moving Ag designation because they are violent or which might be right, cause to want to continue to other areas that are still being farmed and all subdivisions on that. We know, you know, you curify the parcel, said there's no instruction plans, the reason for creating a five acre parcel is it particularly titles to build house. And it is different, bill, um, square houses on certain lots in long term is gonna be residential, it's not the, um, it, it like to bring part of farm away. So I think unfortunately, I mentioned earlier that. Very muddy, I'm. You can wrap your thought. You want, you mentioned earlier. Earlier, I mentioned to you that, um, stakeholders, I've been going to meetings, we're talking about looking at changing the zoning, uh, parcel size, cause it doesn't combine with holes in general plan. Um, because too small, they were talking about changing it twenty acres. So it's hard to argue that a three six acre parcel is inherently not productive. So I think they haven't the specific requirement of general plan to show that the five acre parcels are gonna be agriculturally productive and I think all know what they will be. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have no more, I can inverse or zoom.
Okay, and now bring you back to the mission, just getting possible action.
Would have to be with us speaking. He chair pick the parts of general plan that suits the purpose and acres we've seen throughout the county. Unless one eye lined is not part of agriculture, they be, and orchards, uh, air hazards, uh, both to collect broken down areas and boats and ox trucks and. Isn't Aggie and the general plan that says that it's helping the viability of my old smaller parcels of, is I completely incorrect, there's nothing. Still ordered at my apartment, or the counties has small Ag parcels and it's our detriment. And the board, I have really followed the boards doing, um, for those to reason, but they were supposed to have an ad hoc to discuss changing the minimum sign, I don't know where they are. Or if I come to conclusion, but a five acre parcel, whether people believe the general plan says there are a lot everywhere, um, is for this interpretation because it didn't preserve Ag. Because it didn't preserve ag, just straight acres at time. I'm not sure, uh, uh, has on five thousand square lots and five year lots, so I'm open to one of two things, meaning it back, finding these for denial. Or continue until the applicant, the opportunity to discuss with his family, whether or not they're willing to print ags, but not remain part of the disallowed for subdivision. It will know that twenty acres won't get further divided on the road.
I tend to agree with Commissioner Gibbs on, on those items, uh, go ahead, he's Commissioner Scallie.
Um, I agree with your, because drinking whole harley, can't put a easement, if you keep it in, against him wants the egg, then put the, put the eggman on, and I see you get, put all three parcels. Then you can an egg, if they don't, people break it, then you can an egg. Personally, I'd like to get one parcel and leave it shares, I understand you tomorrow again, I, I get. Boy, we keep parcel, so we do it, can't until the applicant, he said what he wanted to do, thank you.
Of course, I want more, actually, all these subdivisions, so the, the board clarifies what we do with their, their, whatever the name that ad hoc is, where they have farmers, ranchers, and this ad hoc supposedly. Um, they will come up with a new green, um, parcel size. I mean, continue to establish that because we have to, there needs to be, uh, some, put in this while we're in the middle of engine, how we view things. Because I've agreed with the subdivisions for seven years, and it's always a hope we're going to do something. I'm done, the government hasn't done anything more, more quick than seven years. Um, but it can do down this road, a little more gilling, well, it sounded like it would be orchard. Uh, and like I said, we're the county that have five acres, most are free, so have any, um, most are, and it's just wrong, can do down the path.
I wanted to still have him wanting to bring his sons to help with some of the work, I do understand that, but getting back to five acre thousand, it's every, it's true. We can, we can to break it, five acres is agricultural, I've never, I don't know, it's a tough one for me.
Agats.
I would ask that, can he would come to consider and discuss with his family, not that he want to consider the, uh, the easement with further division. Or if they're pressing this thing it back with any denial at a time that gets staff, our remaining staff can do.
Would like to hear the applicant.
Yes.
Uh, Vince, you've been allowed to mute yourself again?
Uh, yes, um, there, okay, so your question, whether to bring it back or, uh, so I say, yeah, so you need to bring it back. Maybe you can ask a question one more time.
The, the, the reason to continue the mode be to give an opportunity to discuss with your family, what you would consider. The easement and the twenty five point seven three acres disallows further, uh, division of the land. If, if really ponder, then I'm going to give you, I'm to hundred. If you're not, then the mode would be to bring them back with fines for denial. I would like to give you opportunity to basically pick what your prince is.
Uh, well, that's like, there's two choices, I'm sure, yeah, we'll continue it, um, and, um, you know, that, you know, like you said, it's. You know, guys, I'm not sure exactly, you know, uh, Commissioner Scallie, you, uh, first can't find me, um, I don't have to do, like, those neighbor. Cars and what's going on, you know, uh, I guess, I'm obviously disappointed, I feel like I'm giving you a strong arm to do some things. I mean, that is, uh, anyway, it's, I would tell the people that would come up to the, I'm generally not sure what your bad agricultural is, that it's a lot of risk, a lot of work. And, uh, I know this is the right thing to, to keep, uh, you know, uh, you know, I should just try to take something of value away. Um, you know, that usually buy something, you know, like buying a house, you know, three year house, and then when it comes in, say, oh, you two years. Um, you know, I just, that's my intention, I still don't, uh, you know, I don't feel like there's a big need to that. I guess, continue it, and then I'll, uh, I'll discuss with my family, and, um, I hope you guys, you know, think about more as well. Anybody, anybody would like to lease it? I'd be happy to lease it.
What is?
Okay, um, thanks for explanation, and I believe Commissioner Ring in that thing?
No, I don't.
Okay, so, all right, then, I guess, under the circumstances, a motion would be order if we, we.
I'm going to continue the, I'm until September seventeenth, our regularly scheduled meeting, take the applicant an opportunity to have that decision with family.
All the favor, I.
I.
Any opposed? During Mo carries of zero, and this continue till the Dean Birmingham, thank you. Uh, let's see, it is now eight o'clock, we've been going at six o'clock, I wouldn't mind taking a five minute take, uh, if that's our theory. So let's inter test for, uh, well, let's see, uh, say ten minutes, thank, we are in this.
Okay, we are discussion eight on line and the next item to concern is item nine point two.
Oh, all right. What's procedure change the last?
So you can bring forward to amend your motion or to redo it.
Okay, so the last item, the applicant on December seventh. So if we reopen the item and do we
vote open it, you raise the majority of the committee to say as we will open this up.
Okay, I'd like to reopen item. I would like to continue the item if the committee came into the meeting in January.
Don't have to reopen it first and ask public comment.
Correct.
Okay.
So reopen it now, then open.
So is Ramon to reopen it?
Some emotion reopen the item.
Okay, okay. All those infer. I any opposed? No, item is opened. So yes, you can make your comments.
So the applicant requested that we can be until regularly scheduled in in January twenty six because they will be country for reading this. I certainly think we should that for them.
Okay.
I'll maybe do that.
One second. Public comment, is there any on changing the change the conduit and state?
There. And do you have any comments with the applicants representative?
Yep.
Yeah, the applicant let me know there could be other decree of voting and they would respectfully request this beginning to anywhere within this. Thank you for taking the creation.
Okay, so motion will be continue the item till January twenty first, twenty six.
Is there second?
Again.
Okay, all the favor.
I.
Okay, Moncary five zero, thank you. And I apologize for moving to nine point two because again had just told me. All right, move on to item two. Can you hear me to review written oral notice of resolution remanding approval of general plan use amendment and amendment and approve of subdivision and zoning code amendment board providers. This is with regard to zone of the twelve, I think twelve parcel to move us back into compliance or help get us into client the H D.
So. Thank you. Appreciate before follow up from Kim and just want to end that in twenty two, there was similar situation at the R A plan. There was a lot of leftover. And I mean, there was there was planners leave. I came April twenty two, say, say, Stephanie, a fourth, I'm sure after we got there, then we start kind of going and note how element we need to get updated. So right away did request proposal, we end up getting Kimberly Horne to be the co-ten that was going to help us fix housing element project. And this is the first part of twenty twenty. Then with that, we had to pull means right at other week times week. Then we've had multiple town. Some of you have been to some or if not all those town meetings here at Board Chivers. We've had paint, epic, both English and Spanish. I'm of the community and had good and out good feedback. We had more planning mission meets with all of you. And we've had multiple joint planning and support of supervisor meetings on on this pick. And April first of this year, we got it from California House Community Development basically indicating that county has met touch to complaints for the housing element and we now adopt. So we went forward and scheduled a planning to meet that same on eight thirty and brought the item before the commission recommend the item to the supervisors on May twenty eighth. The board of providers adopted the housing element for complaints before potentially certain in the document C D. I need to ensure that the county implemented program three point two with the abony of of parts that have been identified within the within the housing element. So at the twenty eighteen, the supervisor also to the resident to the general plan initiation, start the process. And six months later tomorrow, essentially, we we have environmental view, went to the California Environmental Korea that has done review of the other another two parts. And we are here for you to present or I will have I will ask Brian Delatorre, who can to provide us that presentation. Brian?
Good evening listeners. My name is Brian. I'm with Kim Horn. As Abraham, and you've seen live, had a lot of things workshop, whatnot. So like nation, if it falls well, the last time see me a long time hopefully. And I think if we get on your Abraham, she already, but the housing element adopted in May of this year. So twentieth, that house element was compliant with all essential requirements. So the letter that A D provide us is the quote from that letter. The housing is, you know, it meets the shore elements, however, the housing cannot bound in substantial clients. In other words, it can't be certified until county has deleted that program, which is the I'm there where I seen. And it's not a to make sure that we meant this, a program, a program coaching on board. So the letter we received in April, this here April twenty five says is your element is is compliant, your adages are compliant, along as you approve it as is. We need to is confirm you adopt as it and and certified. So we've gone over these a couple of times. The concept of consideration of housing element right now is it's access fund, for example, the grant, which did every B two, P L A, local health fund. It is funding source, I think, is one is the C D G go. What main? Thank you. I will for that is having appliances element. And sued A D anytime come in stipulation or lawsuit, which wires that they need to come in compliance. I think in my opinion, it's a remedy that can just take away local control and allows specific development criteria to have actually non discriminatory rules. So at the beginning of the housing, we analyze various sites and determine with really options, really identify a couple hundred sites and give one or two unit for all those sites. Consolidate all developments to split parcels. And as the latter, we went to, we restarted with the building team parcels, the were considering through public hearings with both body and order. So as we down to twelve parcels and as this pool to resume would known parcels from a couple ones will go over and can it'll I mean, both the plan and the money code of emphasis. And this zone is titled residential high, just taking the same thing from the same residential zones. So this is the details, the zone itself. So it includes the city of twelve five parts from twenty, two dwelling, two five dwellings per year. It would have meant laying designation, ten parts that are currently have a designation of residential mist. And then there are two parts that are currently identified agriculture, all of them together to be amended, be residential high. Similarly, zoning district, ten are rural residential currently, two are agricultural, and altogether we under residential high zone. So there's both be a news designation and zone designation title residential high and the zoning designation and implementing zone of lengths, like a signal. There remember to be amendment to the use map and the use element to update and have language added to the residential high as well as zoning map itself got added to to show and reflect these sheets. There's a new sin when the Minnesota would describe exactly the direction requirements are specifically top twenty three, chapter twenty seven, thirty one, and bill twenty five, chapters three, five, seven, eight. And dangers are to implement this residential high. So there's in it's a couple of sections, a couple of different tools and actors is because it's a reference throughout to that all inserted custom. Went and looked at Stephall and to and a pleasure with Stephanie. She just through made sure that her team in the county is sure who put that there and all holds account, making sure we're doing that. Thank you. These images taken by Stephanie and just to show local objects that be kind of fit in this city ready, but we're allowed by. So there's an apartment, you see his story here. This is forty one use on this one. This has a city of twenty point two acre, twenty point dwelling per acre. I mean, and this three three divinity, you see kind of adding single fan there on the side. You look at the one, so you see that blue blue stroke there. We have ten range, this one twenty, essentially two four dwellings per year. It's mixed in a couple of builds, but two stories, summary story. So being a signal there. I have the sunrise. This is by far highest entity, almost sea dwelling per acre, but it's very small as you see, but we do have nine years here. Also, you can kind of mix with single fan character. This is all this farm worker hanging here and this is twenty twenty five million speaker also funded by a single family house. And the end of the zoning code and the design says our sat is demands don't hold single for housing and are just mashed with it. This be considered a term called housing, it's really between super dense and then go found, kind of like gap. Three or two, so it's commonplace. We don't see much, we really more more first development, but it's not a cock cock development. These are not specific projects, this is illustrative, just so potential project can look like. Everything look much different, everything goes differently, but just shows is kind of what something should look like. Again, this is not a development specifically, specifically a smaller lot, something half an acre. This is a larger, this is thing you can be kind of a court apartment type dial with a base in the middle, some shared open space and then have that being wrapped around. Or similar, just I think a little more frame design out there, saying you tucked in, tucked around really a couple of different, you can you can pull this up. I mean, this is on the large end. This is something that would be very large, something that, you know, we're not expecting, but could be a possibility with this zoning ultimate. And we have all sites. So the all sites in the green, those are the room sites. I will zoom a little bit so it's easier to tell. Easy are one, eight, sorry, one, seven, nine. Those are all right next to you there. There's by San Diego Road. In housing, where we identified one being survived in like inside developed, the other existing used can name any development happen, you can place or the existing. We have some county lands are two there. That's a land within grounded by the policy, which we identify as a candidate, a justice served by U L D R for which is kind of a buddy city. We have these kind of more on the east side, so took Santana, San Ranch P two. I have three plus here. We have the remaining two here. So our wells, cars up there in the corner, that's by two hotels up north by the Holiday Express Field. It's kind of like on the side. And then we have our six and a two to the west. And then I have my colleague here to Garcia, she looked at environment analysis for the assignment and she's be a little on the the takes from that.
Thank you and good evening. Yes, my name is Jack Garcia and I do have a project measure for the environmental house for the project. As you may be aware, we can hit initial state for the purpose housing and implementation project. We let about twenty resource areas, environmentally sourced areas to a program level, determine project impacts. And now it's found for the new resources, compliant with the regulatory framework, local, regional, county, federal, would mitigate impacts set for seven source areas for weak mitigation and the outline mitigation monitoring and reporting program that is a bit of a package. The initial study was circulated for a thirty public review period. In that public review period, received two commentless. They are the final, the responses to comments in package night. The comments in those not require any modigades or change of findings that in the initial study, we noted that none of the impact that were disclosed in the initial study. In Eastern area, and there was new impacts were determined as a result of the commenters. At the stage of the equal process next is for the board of supervisors continue to consider and review not only the findings of initial study, but also the files of commentless and responses to comments. And with that, we are available review since you have anything.
Questions from the committee.
Sorry, two more. Sorry, sorry about that. I'm quick. So just steps, as I mentioned, as each he mentioned, you the steps to certify the housing and to do that, you need to drop both the elements are done and the re switch what we're considering take. And the time, so we have November tonight, which is a consideration demand option. And then on December sixth, we meeting is simply skilled to consider addition of it. And is the singers, if the board of supervisors updated soon as all the issue are on pay, we can snap to A D. And A D has C days review, final package, there's a consistency review, looking at what they proved, including the same as was adopted, if they are consistent, if they send over better. And we get back that within C days, they be quick to respond that with or the six is or else because not a new view, it's really a consistency review. Given the days, again, we don't know exactly how long to take. And then invitation is really the cycle. Half is irregular eventing, not all implementing repairs, public hearings or code updates like that, some are just like dramatic. And I'll sit over back to read the recommendation. Again, we're level officials.
You need to read it.
I have a question for you. Is it true that this kind of or not the situation, I mean, we if we shape individual lots and so we like this one, we don't like that one, work back to zero with regard H C?
Yeah, that assumption. Yeah, that's correct. Anything that revise within housing, when the zone strategy need to be updated, when the house itself, so it have to be back to C D has back through the group period again to be good.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the commission?
Yes. So we, I had a phone conversation with Mr. Castle about this and we've also received emails and a site back. And I have a question about the process. Give for not remembering when we started this seemed like eternity. My time also in this question seemed like it's an eternity. When did this start? When you hired? What? When did you actually begin work?
I believe the contract would execute in August, August, sorry, August twenty twenty three. And then within month of this was data chin and yeah, next after that was really kicked.
Okay, and can you explain process for reach out the twelve souls, the owners, what meant did you to reach to them, but then move what we were to and when did you do?
So every public hearing, every workshop, every study session publicly will notify per regular processes for like hearing whatnot. And as of a real process, noticing parcel owner and parcel owners, three hundred of the properties were notified, which is what would happen.
But when did happen? The properties and everyone within the hundred was notified? Because it sounded like just the general, there's a mean and and true notification. Were less sent to the property owner than them, what our attention were?
State law requires that those notice go out twenty days for the scheduled public hearing. So they were five, I believe, talk to thirty first of twenty five of the public hearing.
It's two, two years after, two years, we decide, hey, by the way, we have planned, plan for your pretty.
That was for the reasons for like actual official action, this action, or the house element been regularly write notifications as publicly noted as no process.
Is the standard process that you go and you change somebody's property and even have decency send a letter?
Yeah, the best practice is try to get any people all possible. Your your priority modern is market.
What I get for assuming, you know what it means. I feel like that right now. I just assumption that these were notified at the time it started to seem particular parts because me, that's basic sense. So at this point, I'm comfortable going forward and it's unfortunate they're at the eleven thousand, the fifty nine cent, but it's acceptable. It wasn't in August of twenty three. And I hope we do this again, we have decency to write a letter, a little less to these poll in future that, hey, this is what we plans are proper. Because now I have people that are extremely upset and I'm for them. I said, I just assumed we did, I thought something very big and I'm embarrassed and upset that I didn't ask this and assume that I would we have done it. I cannot support it all.
Okay, well, we're still your question for a staff.
Excuse me, there. I live within sixty feet of one of the property. I'm a letter to say they were given that process because they come through. So I never ever read this. So didn't your job?
That's a function. That's a public.
Then somebody do their job.
There's there's a mailing list within the roadmap and whatnot.
I have a question. Please.
So you start a process, I own property, you start process, it can say you're going to reown my land.
Correct. That's correct.
And I know say for however many years and you say, oh, guess what? Oh, that's over. However, many years, tears, three years. Now I'm getting old. Oh, you can house here.
Yeah, this has been going, yeah, years. The five we've had outreach and people in our meetings and try to let it into call you know, he's invited neighbors, invite everyone to be involved in this process. So that's practice doing this outreach. Yeah, gotten a lot of outreach in this process. So.
Excuse me, you consider the best practices?
Yeah, I tried it out and people don't shut up. It's it definitely.
I've been sixty to one property. I never left, not a phone call from the key from anyone. Now, like Mr. Kim gets this one in an hour, you drop on these properties and all the names.
That's what was identified, that letter, what we see, it should be.
Can I just inject something might be way out of line, but but a half a half days it is a question. When you had you within C P one of these properties, does that cause in order to do regard to being able to debate and discussion and the fourth on on the vast Sean and and.
If it lie generally enough, then oh, right. If it affects not a community, then no, I don't really think that case.
Okay, so I just want to check.
So I said, so you're seeing that these folks all notify though that they get the land designation change, right? You say we're all.
Yeah, first law, I think it was required to notify all those partners and hundred from those properties.
They were notified two years to it after we already basically made many, many distance after we public rings workshops to 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 the burden. That's acceptable going forward. We need to fix, I need to process. They receive multiple letters if I hear from say, we have a great idea, what do you think of it?
And you said when three, so this falls with that category, saying that Commissioner Gagley should have notified.
Commissioner Gagley was a notificationist. If he didn't receive a letter, it might have been mail error, but did not receive his back. No, 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 no avail delivery. So correctly, we're on the listings to you and your leave brother.
How was his mail?
Wait, 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 stop, stop, stop. My brother doesn't have his own property that I own across the property I'm talking about. So then didn't get to the right address.
He would like and show you this, and we confirm went to Gallios, two letters went to Gallios.
Yeah, it is.
You don't mean to say that out?
Okay, so it's further, further question from the mission. Okay, let's hope it not public on the end.
Okay, a chain asshole to protodium, you have three minutes.
Oh, here I am.
Yes.
I just make sure. Hey, good evening. Now that you get past, that's a letter that was a land and use case for that I had to help mitigate the ways that in the packet as far on me. I want to thank you for the opportunity to just send my thoughts and propose to the county general, general plan, subsequent reason of the property that I own on Senegal Road. Property of care about. I have a lot of sweat equity, I'm energy and veteran. And the truth is, I'm disappointed I'm in here tonight, kind of adversarial, you can know basically every year about money. But I understand, I understand your understanding is prepared to take complaints for the housing dates from some amount of. Appreciate that. I'm going to be working diligently, finding a possible solution, but I'm generally think this was to reown this unrealistic and so city incompatible with neighborhood and provides guarantee of city services if this were implemented. Like this is something that my customer kind of find now that I saw intention and what I'm seeing here because I needed a hard of a cane. And I I have a busy for I work a lot and involve a lot of things and there wasn't a paper just to see it. For a letter, if I do the extent of change and use this and that, I just don't know whether or not they would have imparted had I own. But I think this is going to have ruled against a ticket for like me. It's the county's mind and as of generations, I sympathize. And that I don't think dumb bunch of housing arms of love of impact in this area is the way out. But what I can say is I hold this pretty dear and I urge Stephen Kishin to find other way that doesn't include stripping, you know, some personal property rights and value for select souls. And I'm in them, you let them know you're in the process of trying to have a chance of testing. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hey, Carol Gonzalez.
Uh, Merrill Gonzalez and ten will drive the property owner of a Plex H D April lot and link and call BS. I see even if it came from a lack of mean in viewer last year, twenty three four, the notification that I got recently in October, this mean I not received anything as property owner from any bills and very diligent about my all. And I explained to the board at that time, or every member, including my sister, actually, was that what the three of this specifically talking about is in the eight hundred book of Paul, I leave. And it's an acre, eight acre plot back to our pardon and wanted designate as a high density unit and they were talking about sixty minutes for acre. And was be restored. They only let it restores because that's the policy that the fair department could go as they would go or and told them the time walk that area, go walk. You have a hard school, you have the ladder there, you have the high school one by, you have preschool and the it's already a zip track and now even talk about zoning. Because apparently this party fucks with or info, so considered a county property, you know, it's completely rounded by sea property. And I just the only reason why it haven't been resolved is because there's some sort of attack, attack, let me find out, but there's some sort of tax issue, exchange agreements. That's the only reason why it hasn't been read past. Just like if you get a man bit cup with some sort of man like designated this, if it's designated city property then it's Aston city. Then say, listen, single story homes along that area, there's no two street homes, there's single story home zone or our we keep it our. And I even asked the owner of the property back in February of twenty four, he's willing to put in a zen homes, so the characteristics of the neighborhood stay the same. And what friends me or is since read the governor news has passed some executive emergency order to grenade in Smerino County, one of fifteen counties to basically through the tape. So they can, um, to develop a land for to just because after me is a requirement, like putting your back to, but it's reasonable. So all I have to say is if this designated or reowned to the sea, that they exist within that for one. Thank you very much.
Really, really nice.
Really glad. And I want, I'm like a house, I'm right that it back up to house. I never have ever seen anything except that she's received. And our area is so impacted right now, just what you said traffic, street, can't even find a place park, can I just somebody put the streets behind my house? I think they want to put for my somebody else's house. Why don't you ask somebody if you're willing to reown it, say, say, you're deuce. Because it's okay, or you could just go ahead and tell people what they have to do because governor wants to have more house. And I know what all this stuff means, but when I know means the hat in the area, it will be enough. Okay. And you ever look at that, this is houses, this is those singles, houses, singles, stories, singles, three houses and souls. We're going to put three hundred in there? No, it's all, please don't let it in.
Thank you. It just will come.
I have public comment change reviews.
Okay, I'm bringing back to the mission and for discussion, put your action.
We have to do our requirement. That's very important for us for funding and everything else. I'm just a little bit shocked. There was, it seems like there was a lot of folks weren't notified. And I would that they're going to affect their livelihood such way. That's too important to know how we, how we continue saying this is okay without knowing everybody's notified. And anybody that was in three hundred feet, that's accurate, they were also notified. It's a present for us, yeah.
Stephen Howe or those letters mailed or just enroll mail to the plaque or they how they mail?
The state just request that we let out the regular mail and the ads is pulled via hundred radius or G I S them.
Okay. Thank you.
If we, if we don't agree with this, the reality to go to down zero and stall over again.
Assuming the county has money to spend, start over, but I doubt. At the same time, we can go ahead, something's wrong. So I don't, I actually need a bit and board. It's just a commission anyway, board. Ultimately, it's decision and if they're going to do it, they could rather than can find money, start over.
Is there a way to verify all these inf locations and all locations? Is there a way that you tell us that they heard back from a hundred percent of them? And you know that they all know what's going on?
It's not required to return back the letter. So we've heard from you, pre owners, I've spoken to a few days well and explained this is anxious to zone. But development is not forced on anyone and the property owns to maintain property rights.
So it actually true, though, this is just recommendation. I mean, part of it is, but resoning, okay, the general plan amendment, we were making a recommendation that the zone were, or how about it back? It's one of those just laid action, the other one to quasi judicial.
I give their pledges given that it's just a random.
Okay, both was right and they're both of them. Okay, thank you.
I would recommend the, where my commandant would be is an individual that would recommend reading this and starting over, notifying what our intentions are to go. And two years after and assume they got fail and we should at least the decency to get response from these. But I got this ten letters, ten letters, and if you have to get a signature in the envelope, do it. Not that difficult. If the county doesn't have two bucks, get the signature, then we shouldn't be going forward with it.
Do you know other counties? I understand we're coming with law regarding notifications. If that were, if that were to, or some of them didn't deliver, but do you know what counties and roundness do with work to this? They are they own component with it while are they going above and beyond?
So also they're seeing consult for the D policy. So just when it's like gen outreach in general, uh, they've had maybe over the same amount of events we've had at county, they may be the total of the county had, I don't know, five hundred.
That's not what I'm asking.
Yes.
You're asking about the minimum of notification. For example, does the hell for initiation with this or?
Every county, cities are different.
So don't actually.
We don't know. We're consulted. It's always, yeah, the distinction.
Stanley, do you?
I did, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, all right. As member of the block, you like dress with your history. I was sorry.
Chair. It is not quite so certified, a mail only be fifty two containers required outside of fine mail. However, you can request that go into board that those missing outside of fine mail.
I mean, it'd be quite shocking if you found out that, hey, why they're, who's going to designate my land? Well, I didn't know about it. I, I, that's.
The money spent hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand with this whole process cost fact that we've just pointed the end road, just spending all the money and we're, oh, people are pretty, I didn't know. That's fantastic. It's just can't happen again. They're not on this commission, not shouldn't happen again, should be ashamed of themselves. I'm disgusted. So my recommendation would be we send to the board for a recommendation, not existing starter and doing things a quick way.
Do we have time for that?
We'll make them. And that's the both of the board wants, but I mean, obviously.
The other, the other option of course is however, we will be agreed to party, parties have the opportunity to appeal, but.
It's just a recommendation, I can't get less.
Oh, that's true. True, that's true.
This is a commission.
Rendation, right, yeah, Ari.
They have the, I'm just the board, they don't like the board decisions, there's no need to appeal the board to, but I don't need to bring to that point. So if you're willing to take a shot, I'll I'll hide it, the board go to the, the board is provided, return the drawing board and start over, notify proper owners from the ghetto, the initiative.
Okay, we have mission on tables, there.
So with with, yeah, the friendly amendment to certify, make sure that get a a response from proper owners, and just to them, they're coded with it, N F X more than one, or if at the go door at the point, do send to get a bond, it's not acceptable, we don't do.
What about neighbors?
Then, well, our, our, we change noticing thousand feet, I mean, that'd been after October twenty twenty four, but currently, I wouldn't be a thousand.
Is not opted to our code, codes three hundred feet, so this.
Okay, well, the motion would be with the friendly amendment, you certified mail, and I would suggest we keep mailing people and contacting in every possible way, and be knocking their little birds to give response to the, for many property owner effect, it really is that my work. And if if the solace to do, I mean, it's probably part of why we're in, in my estimation, I don't, we give everything, everything staff, actually, we have staff member, um you might need help if you rain on the contract, whatever the board is to do, because this is not acceptable.
Okay, so we have a motion, I do have a send for the motion.
Okay.
May I draw a vote, please?
Absolutely, can I get a clarification, county council, because resolutions were to recommend, they would approve this, we need to crack, they updated recommended resolution, the board do not approve this?
I'll pop so, thanks, I'll recommend the way.
Okay, oh, Vincent Hayden, strict.
Okay, I'm a little confused now, I'm gonna say yes, do the, go back to include elements and notify all folks and go back to the providers.
A yes means starter and do it more thoroughly.
Okay, Richard, just do.
I'm gonna know that, just because we've put so much in an evidence, it is so crucial that we get done, and there, we have to do a special account, even when individual pre owners are obviously be devanted, there's a thing can do, then assess by everybody in county, go and voting, oh, thank you.
Robert Scioti?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Okay, that's a a four one in favor of reckoning the board, didn't I, reasons, um and that's if I'd mind including the process.
Thank you.
Okay, um moving on to item ten, future agenda items, um Helen, um come to item ten, back in the May time, and don't hold me on exactly, but. We have situated where some wanted to potentially every panel, commercial panel, in a R A P in case, and uh we had apparently come a consensus at time that you limit that the omen of panel as an acceptable use, and for those types of parcels was inadvertent. Um that others were very similar, um benefits, things like that, or I don't know to what extent benefits is very similar, but any event, um Brexford Dog, I guess, uh would would be a would be acceptable, anyway, my story short. Because of the fact the title need five updates taking much longer than any anticipated, and there's an aha apparently looking at some of the eyes within uh type twenty five, even now, it's time think to start bring back piece of type twenty five, I mentioned at those meeting, and I realize staff is really handed. But if we'd at least get the 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 cash situation summed out, because we do have an applicant who's wanting to bring homers to county and and basically camp, and it's because of something that we may not have done intentionally, uh we should at least be discussing that thing, so I don't add it as a a future item.
I second that.
Okay, I think this need incense, I don't think you need an ocean.
And not just, I mean, I'd like bring back chunks of non controversial, get it passed through to go to the board, I mean, bringing a thousand page stacks not held to anybody, we tried in a build, so I'd like just move what we can as quickly as can. I'm forgetting the board's and adopt, I'm assuming, I'm not, I'm remembering, I'm just thinking what we did, and assuming the board, I don't think adopt any of it, so my memory's failing.
Let's take a long stream, we pass it, then we're does anything with it.
Yeah, sometimes that's happening, okay, so that life charge item, um our items had?
Is there a policy change that we implement to to require that we button these little things that we should get notification with property owners, whether in person, phone, email, to fighter, I'll go there, I'll on their door, I mean, need to fix S P in a minute, please.
Do you have for neighbors contact to verify they have to you?
Yeah, the parcel, we just, we can just say, well, the general public notified therefore, because we don't attention to the government, why should I, it's it's a track at a level, so they need to be notified, the parcels are affected by we're doing, they need to notify, it's acceptable to say the general public notify, it's their property, which is the particular so.
Good night, um to the uh cousin that's depicted, it it be noted for like hearing, um which which done, but it does date in involve information, public has received that notices, and that would be a policy change, believe that we get some confirmation, but it is when practiced, it's central, notification central, um then um we receive phone call, and you know, here, but. There's no requirement that confirm that everybody has has received.
Can we get a requirement, I think we, yeah, bring back. Yes, can can at least just bring back, and we can't throw too much more, Michael, will you be Mike, um at some point, huge, we gotta get the fixer rather than.
Support as a fridge item, absolutely.
Thank you.
To other items, so come in our announcement, I guess, is next, and uh so are there, I I have something, but anybody?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so I've mentioned, uh being to a a couple of weeks ago, and I was in there for California County, uh Plan Missions Association Conference, was a day conference, got a lot of great information from that. Any event, I will be, I helped present a PowerPoint on tonight, and it didn't make it on the end, I did send a PowerPoint, and it turns out just we're giving the facts already, I know, but we'll never to get that done by the by next point commission meeting. And the piece of news is um comments next year, uh residents, the organization gets decided, the conference is held each year, and it's a conference of plan missions, potentially mall the counties, although won't always be retained from more than handful, in in event, um I ended up elect president first year, which means that I to decide where the conference is going to be held, and kings that conference, we had in the back brewing a lister, so just a eye. So please be thinking about things that might want to showcase or county, uh this wouldn't not just count, but also the inquiries, that's all I had. Okay, I think next item on agenda adjourned.
I'm adjourned.
All those neighbor?
Hi.
Any opponent, no, here in our adjourned, nine four.